Executive session, and we are now in open session. I can see my colleagues do the pandemic again. You can see that everyone is socially, socially distant. And thank you, Tom, for being here. Fran, my colleagues, Steve Chukri and Supervisor Gates are currently in their home offices. So, thank you for joining us all the way through executive session, gentlemen. I will now be looking for item number, I believe it's actually number two on this one, but we'll go take that one first. An agreement with the town of Carefree regarding one Arizona opioid settlement. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Sellers.
I move that we approve the agreement with town of Carefree on the one opioid Arizona settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor. Now, I'll give it to Supervisor Garrett, he just barely beat you. Okay, I do have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, thank you Bill. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move back to item number two, possible action discussion related to election litigation and other related election matters, I believe. Well, that was part of the discussion in executive, but looking for a motion there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Vice Chairman Sellers.
I move that we authorize the county attorney to respond to the subpoenas issued by the Senate by filing a complaint in Superior Court and by sending a letter to the Senate as directed in executive session.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Sellers. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'll give it to Supervisor Gates that time because he's out there in cyber world. So Supervisor Gates, second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I was hoping to be able to make a.
Oh, would you want to make a comment before the vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's go ahead. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the dialogue that we've had. I do want to say this. First of all, I want to, once again, thank our election workers, our staff. So many hundreds, if not thousands, of individuals participated and volunteered on Election Day, November 3rd, to do what we have always done, and that is provide an election that was safe, secure, and accurate. These hardworking workers are both Republicans and Democrats and independents, and they have done everything they can to ensure that, that all voters had the right to cast their ballot, to exercise that most fundamental right we have, the right to vote, and those ballots were counted and they were accurately tabulated. I want to say that. So, thank you to all the hardworking employees at our election office and those that are from both political parties that volunteered on that Election Day, November 3rd. That's first. Second, I do want to say a big thank you to our attorney, Tom Liddy, our Elections Director for Election Day voting, Scott Jarrett, and yourself, Mr. Chairman. All three of you willingly went to the legislature and participated in a hearing, a very long hearing, six or so hours, in which you addressed every possible question there in public to the Senate Judiciary Committee. There was not one question that anyone dodged, there was not one question that was not answered. Every question was answered, and any type of allegations of fraud or, or election tampering was debunked and knocked down, and that was fact. Anyone can go online and watch the hearing and see that was the case. And I do want to thank you all for, for spending more than six hours answering questions by this legislative committee. That's number two. The third point is my disappointment. I served in the legislature. I know quite a few of the members that are still there. I have good friends on both sides of the aisle, but I am disappointed in the Senate Judiciary Chair. I know him well. I served with him while he was Judiciary Chair in the House. I served on, on his actual committee, the House Judiciary Committee, served with him throughout my tenure at the House as he was a member. But I am very disappointed of the subpoenas that were sent over to the county. I believe he knows better. He's an attorney, he's a very experienced lawmaker, he has been there for a very long time, and he is very smart. I'll be the first to say, he is one of the very, one of the most smartest members of the legislature walking down there, and he knows better. And when I see a subpoena that was sent over, that the public has had an opportunity to see, it really shows that they have gone to new lanes to not only serve a subpoena to a governmental entity, but be so far out of bounds in their subpoena. So, I am very disappointed in the Senate Judiciary Chair. He knows better. The second, or the final point I want to make is to the people of Maricopa County. Many of our constituency in all five districts went out on Election Day, either by early voting or on Election Day, and they cast the ballot. They know that they're casting a ballot in an election that is safe, secure, and modern. And how they know that is that back at the beginning of this year, this body, this, this Board of Supervisors worked in a bipartisan manner with our county recorder, Adrian Fontes, and thank you Adrian Fontes for your service, but we worked in a bipartisan manner to renegotiate a contract between the county recorder and the Board of Supervisors. We all agreed to it in a bipartisan manner. We worked together in a bipartisan manner to come up with new procedures for all three elections, the presidential primary, our primary, and our general. All three elections, new procedures, new resources, to the tune, to the tune of millions of dollars in a new tabulation system, all in a bipartisan manner to make sure that we had a successful election, and it was. We had no complaints in the primary, we had no complaints in our presidential primary, and we had no complaints in our general election until two days after the election. That's when the complaints started coming. I am, I've always believed that our department, our Elections Department, was up to the task to pull off an election in unprecedented times during a pandemic, and they were successful. And I congratulate everyone that participated in that election. I can tell you that as a former election employee and now current member of the Board of Supervisors, I expect that there will always be criticism from folks that do not like the outcome of the election. I expect that. You're always going to have it. We have it in every election. For those that are not successful are usually the first to point and criticize. But yet, at the end of the day, the fact is that we had a safe, secure election, as we have always had in every, every year. We had an election that had the largest historic turnout that we have ever had, and everyone had the opportunity to cast their ballot, and everyone's ballot was tabulated. It was certified by a Republican governor, a Republican Attorney General, and a Democratic Secretary of State. This whole election has been bipartisan with both parties certifying that the election is over, it is complete, and it is accurate. And I think that for the people of Arizona, rest assured that that is the truth, and I believe that vast majority of Republicans, Democrats, and independents believe the election was accurate, complete, and it is over. Now, unfortunately, we have some folks that will never accept the election, no matter what happens, they'll never accept the election. The only thing I can tell them is, as I have told publicly to the Senate President, that I do support having some form of an audit, I do support having some type of a discussion with all the stakeholders, with both political parties, the Secretary of State, and members of the legislature, should they want to participate. But we do it when litigation is over, we do it when all the legal issues are resolved, we sit down and we do it right. I want to be able to have an audit where everyone could look at and say, you know what, Maricopa County did an excellent job, had a historic turnout, and our machines, our investments, our policies worked on November 3rd, and it has once again proven that our system is correct. We have done three LNA's, three, not one, two, but three LNA, logic and accuracy tests. These tests are performed before, after the election to prove to both political parties who have signed off on that LNA, to say the election and the machines were accurate. Unfortunately, we have these, these sideshows now coming from the legislature, and I respect, many of them are my former colleagues there at the Capitol. I respect what they're trying to, I guess, attempt to do, but I'm not interested in playing games. I'm not interested in this political theater. I'm not interested in trying to satisfy a small, small group of loud participants at the expense of a certified tabulation system. I'm not interested in trying to do a sideshow when it comes to the information of, to the millions of voters. I want to be able to move forward. I believe this election is over. I want to be able to conduct an audit just to continue to prove faith in our election system, but we don't do it in the middle of a circus that the legislature wants to entertain, and we don't do it in the middle of court hearings. I am interested in an audit, I am interested in doing it in a bipartisan manner in which we have conducted, this entire election has, but we do it at a later date, and at that time, I would be totally supportive of doing an audit with all the stakeholders, but we do it right, not in the middle of a legislative circus and a legislative sideshow. Mr. Chairman, I support the motion moving forward, and I look forward to continuing to working with the legislature, but we're not, or at least I'm not, interested in political sideshows. Thank you.
Well, as always, we appreciate your passion, Supervisor Gallardo. You do make those points awfully well for, for you and your district, your constituency. So, I appreciate it. Being that Supervisor Gallardo wanted to make a statement prior to, to his vote, I'm going to leave that option open then to the rest of my board, so I will go one by one. Supervisor Chukri.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
I can. You're coming loud and clear, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I too have some concerns about what was brought forward in the subpoenas, and I certainly understand the need, and I think it's important to get clarity from the courts along those lines. For example, releasing people's private resident addresses, date of birth, that is, that is concerning to me to put out in the public sphere. And quite honestly, some of the other things asked for, including what I just mentioned, I'm not even sure we can do legally. So, I think it's important to get clarity. However, I also believe, Mr. Chairman and colleagues, and I respect all of you, that as you know, for some time, I've believed in an audit, and notwithstanding what Mr. Gallardo just said, and I certainly understand his sentiment, and understand that legal issues need to be resolved before an audit can go forward, or else it could be perceived as tampered with evidence. I understand all those. However, I do not think it can be done in isolation, I've said that several times, in that we simply do what is before us today without coupling that with at least directing our team to start the beginnings of what an audit would look like, making sure that an independent, certified election auditor is available to start to begin the workings of scope of work for an audit. So, I will not be supporting this measure today because of those issues, and primarily because I think it should be coupled, this today's motion, with an audit. And so, that is my, my thought process, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate you affording me the time to communicate my position. Thank you.
Okay, so to be clear, you were, you were voting no on the motion for complaint?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I echo many of the comments that Supervisor Chukri just made. I think that it is incumbent upon this body to conduct an audit, and I do think that that is very important because I want people in Maricopa County to understand, we're not trying to hide anything. This group believes in transparency, that's why there's already been hand count audit, that's why there's already been the LNA test that Supervisor Gallardo referenced. So, I'm very much supportive of conducting a third-party audit once these lawsuits have been concluded. But that's really not the nature of the motion that's in front of us today. We received a subpoena from the Chairman of the Senate Judiciary Committee, someone who I respect, and this subpoena asked us to produce a significant amount of electronic documents by 5:00 PM today. We received this just a few days ago, just after you, Mr. Chair, went down and testified before the Senate Judiciary Committee plus one. And I thank you for going and testifying there, and I also thank the Representative of the County Attorney's Office, Tom Liddy, and Scott Jarrett for participating in that. But let's be clear, these subpoenas that have been issued and are before this body are truly extraordinary in the breadth of information that they're looking for. And let's be clear what they're looking for. As a conservative, I feel strongly about individual private information of individuals, of voters, and that information has been requested in these subpoenas. And I'm going to fight to protect that information before we turn it over. Now, when I say that, I will be supporting this motion to get clear direction from the courts. I'm not willing to turn it over without the court speaking very clearly on how we're going to protect that private information. And I know all of my colleagues share my concerns about this information of our voters. It's so important, it's a solemn duty that we have as members of the Board of Supervisors. Now, again, if we did what the Senate Judiciary Committee has asked and turned over this private information to them, along with other documents, electronic documents, I don't know what they're going to do with it. They've not made it clear to me. And until we have a court step in and say very specifically how this information might be utilized, again, I will be supporting filing this complaint in the Superior Court and to get some clarity on how we move forward. But let me be very clear, I'm very supportive of the transparent measures that Maricopa County has taken already and that we will certainly take, I have no doubt, in a third-party audit. We want our residents to have confidence in our election system, and all three of these elections have been handled excellently by our Elections Department, and I have no doubt that Maricopa County will continue to do so in the future. And I'm sure that we're going to learn lessons when we do this third-party audit that will put us in a position, you know, given the principles of continuous improvement, to do an even better job in the future. Thanks so much, Mr. Chair.
So, Bill, I'm going one by one. Is your vote for aye? Is your, are you an aye vote? Okay.
I am, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Vice Chairman Sellers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, I agree with, with virtually everything that's already been said by the other supervisors. I feel we, in an extremely challenging time, really did an excellent job of putting on a fair, honest election, and it's been so frustrating to me that because of the various legal challenges that we've been faced with, we've not been able to really address some of the questions as openly as we would like to. I look forward to getting past all this so that we can, in fact, provide the information openly and public to prove that what we did was, as in the words of Supervisor Chukri, "the best in class." So, thank you, and my, my vote is aye.
Okay, thank you. I had a hand in writing a letter back. The legislature invited me, both the House, Rusty Bowers, Representative Toma, as well as Senate President Fan and Mr. Senator Leach, to come and talk to them as this, as some of the concerns were happening. And I appreciated that, I appreciated the ability to talk to basically both Houses of the legislature at the same time. And I've, I've never quite grasped what occurred. I guess I was invited again to what I thought would be a joint committee to talk about their issues that they've had with the election, and then, and then it turned a little bit, and then it just became certain people of the Senate. And I thought I was there to answer, and I, and I asked my team, Mr. Liddy and Mr. Jarrett to come and talk about that. I asked them, I asked them to please watch the canvas about some of the concerns that a lot of our voters had, and the step-by-step process that we went through. And then I participated in just a Senate Judiciary Committee meeting that occurred where they asked some of those same questions that when, where I had asked them to go over the canvas, and some of those same questions were asked. But this one lasted six hours, and I did the best I could, so did Mr. Jarrett, and then on the legal side, so did Mr. Liddy, to give them a full scope of what, of what this election and how it transpired, the processes, the people behind it, the machinery, the software. And that's what I went down there for, to educate that. And then to be slapped with, with two subpoenas was, I don't know, I could be viewed that as a slap in the face because none of those questions or concerns that they served on us were asked about with those subpoenas and what drove those. So, I had to then feel that those subpoenas were predetermined, no matter what. I went there. there to say, no matter what our legal team went down there to say, and especially no matter what Mr. Jarrett had to say. So, it's, to me, that's, that's kind of telling. I have, I have a letter that I have written to actually this, this Senate President Fan that will, will hopefully get out to the legislature quickly. So, I'm not going to make a, a whole lot of statements because they will be, they will be reading those. "I have been clear to the public and the legislature, a forensic audit will be done, but not while there is active litigation. I believe this demand is unrealistic, these subpoenas are unrealistic in their timeframes, an intrusion into the privacy of our voters and wants us to disregard the very statutes they created. Make no mistake, I have a great feeling that this board is willing to do an audit. I've heard it now from all five of my colleagues. But that's not what this is about right now. There are real constitutional issues with these subpoenas. I look forward to when we can get some clarification from the court so we can move forward with a forensic audit and quite possibly other things if a court deems it appropriate within the statute authority of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors." So, I want there to be no doubt that I will be doing that. I also told my board, I've been working through this process the best I can as being a chairman of the Board of Supervisors. And I will continue to do my best to put options in front of us that will get us to clarity, consistency, and confidence and trust back into our elections. And I am going to continue to work on those items. Audits, tours, everything that I can pull off so our voter can become confident again. It is really difficult to watch what is occurring on Twitter and not have, being able to answer for that, where people are taking what they think is the high ground because we are not speaking back. I think we are a unified voice of this board. And that is, we will be working hard. And maybe that is going to be occurring through Christmas, which I, what I wish everybody would just spend time with their families. But unfortunately, Tom and everyone else, we, we might be working through these Christmas holidays to, again, bring confidence and trust back to the election, which is the greatest Christmas present I can offer our community. So, with that, I vote aye. That means the board has voted four to one to direct Mr. Liddy and our team to follow through. And good luck on that. I hate to say this time and time again, but I'm passionate about our election people. Sometimes we have to be defensive, but other times we need to do things to verify everything went perfect because I still feel that we ran three great elections, presidential preference election, primary election, and general election in a pandemic. And I could not be happier for that. So, with that, we are now adjourned.